This is a courtesy announcement, the meeting is now live on YouTube.
Hello.
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 Yep.
Testing.
Yeah, that one is more my size. But I don't know why it happens to me every time. I'm like so stressed that I want to die.
It'll be great. We're all here.
Thank you.
Lisa's here, and Jack's coming in in a minute. Suzanne, Cami, and Alex.
I got the whole house.
Hit the whole team, don't worry.
Yeah.
Don't worry, you're the quarterback. We're not gonna let you get hit.
Yeah, I love my nose. I didn't put toes today because of the hearing, and it hurts so bad. It's swollen, and it hurts. Does it look bad?
No.
It's not red? Okay.
Very professional.
You're calm. Do you?
Yes.
I remember that she come up to provide the trees. Yeah. The chair. Hmm?
All right, can you hear me? This is a call to order for the February 22nd, 2024, meeting of the Santa Clara County Planning Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll to establish the presence of a quorum?
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Escobar.
Here.
Commissioner Rousier.
Present.
Commissioner Levy.
Present.
Commissioner Romero.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Belska.
Present.
Chairperson O'Donohue.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Please stand if you're able to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, my name is Sean O'Donohue, and I'll be chairing tonight's Planning Commission meeting. On behalf of the commission, welcome to today's meeting. Please turn off or mute all your electronic devices, including cell phones that may interrupt the meeting. The first item on the agenda is public comment. This item is reserved for people who wish to address the commission on any matter within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The law does not permit commission action or extended discussion of any item not on the agenda, except under special circumstances. If commission action or response is requested, the commission may place the matter on a future agenda. Statements that require response may refer to staff for reply in writing. Members of the public who wish to address the commission on a non-agendized item should request to speak at this time by giving a request-to-speak form to the deputy clerk if you're in chambers, or by using the Blu-ray's hand icon if you're attending virtually. Are there any speakers?
We have no speakers in chambers. We do have one, we have two speakers in the Zoom room. Our first, so three minutes would be the normal amount. Our first speaker is Paul Soto. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking. You will have three minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Paul Soto. I'm from Mariposa Horseshoe, which you know as the North of Glen area, the Bieber Park area. Racism, redlining, segregation in schools, housing, and the economic deficits these governments sanctioned supported illegitimate exercising of political, economic influence. There must be an accounting for these deficits. It has created an inflated social capital and entitlement to wealth and home equity that is predicated upon a belief that only Anglos are entitled to the natural resources, and that they are justified legally, morally, and ethically, and that they are aligned with the democratic processes. Over time and over generations, there has been a population that has been exploited, abused, dehumanized in schools, on the streets, and in government, and considered inferior genetically, ill-equipped to sit as equals in government policies. Now, these are the historical generational consequences that were instituted by the planning commissions, both on the county and the city level. Because redlining is what created these, redlining created and institutionalized a system that did two things simultaneously. While it concentrated wealth on the west side of San Jose, let's put it, the west of east, the west of Guadalupe River. Everything west of Guadalupe River was held to a different standard than everything that was east of Guadalupe River. And there's a historical precedence for that, and it goes, it's all the way back to the land grant that was given to Roberto Belermino. It starts there. That's the start point. Now, San Francisco is legally and very publicly acknowledging the historical and economic deficits that were created by redlining, and they're planning a reparations commission in order to address that. Now, it's going to lead to this planning commission, so what I'm challenging this commission to do is start getting prepared for that. What kind of legal position are you as commissioners going to take? On number one, acknowledging that those historical deficits were created as a result of redlining. The 1939 map that was created here in the city of San Jose. Number two, how was the planning commission's complicit in that designation? Either ostensibly or silently. Because you could commit something by an act of omission, just by not doing anything, and you've done something. So I'd like to challenge this commission, because I'm going to be pressing on that from here on out. I want to know what your position is on that redlining. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sharon Luna. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Good evening, supervisor. Sharon Luna from the San Martin Neighborhood Association. SMNA is addressing the concerns that is happening in San Martin, which comes from businesses that are not adhering to approved plans they submit to you in the Board of Supervisors. Residents are left to deal with having to deal with code enforcement, who is understaffed, and according to a staff member, and I quote, for this was a surprise to the SMNA board, "They receive funding through invoicing for permits fees and field work related to development proposals. They receive little to no money from the general fund. Our enforcement activities, while arguably a necessary part of the job, are unfunded, and our ability to cover costs related to these activities is limited. This explains why when residents report concerns, there is little to no action at times, even though time and time again, we are told it is due to being understaffed. The planning commission is responsible for approving projects in San Martin, and some of these projects come with mitigations. However, it is not clear who is responsible to ensure these mitigations go in, as you have stated. We have two, possibly three, projects that the commission has approved, and that have not adhered to the mitigation set by you, and in one case, the Board of Supervisors. SMNA is asking for a follow-up plan to be implemented to show that these mitigations have been adhered to. It seems that once a business is approved, it takes a life of its own. Just take a look at San Martin Granite Outlet and the San Martin Motors. It's hard to hear when commissioners talk about the businesses in San Martin, yet you give the approval. We would like to suggest that you review, or planning reviews, mitigations, and whether implemented or not, that a 90-day check is done to ensure that the business you approve is built in that manner. Thank you very much for your time."
And that concludes our speakers.
Okay, thank you. I will close public comment. The next item is number four, the consent calendar. Next item on the agenda is approval of this consent calendar and changes to the commission agenda. Are there any questions, changes, or discussion for the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Can I get a second? Okay.
Apologies if you could use your microphone.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the consent calendar by myself, and second by Commissioner Levy. Can we get a... Can you call the roll?
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Escobar.
Yes.
Commissioner Rousier.
I approve.
Commissioner Levy.
Aye.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Belska.
Yes.
Chairperson O'Donohue.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving right along. Item number five. Public hearing to consider a concurrent land use application consisting of building site approval, design review tier three, and grading approval to allow the construction of a new 12,910 square foot single-family dwelling, associated site improvements, and 1,103 square foot accessory dwelling unit on a .76 acre site. Grading quantities include 881 cubic yards of cut and 174 cubic yards of fill, SEQA exempt pursuant to Section 15303, Class 3A of the SEQA guidelines. Owner is Linga Vupala, and I'm sorry if I butcher this, Caliani Gelati, applicant Tom Sloan, property address 15581 Glen Una Drive in Los Gatos, APN 51026007. General plan, urban service area Saratoga, zoning RHS D1, supervisory district five, file number PLN 22-137, ID number 119151. Does the clerk have a Levine Act announcement?
I do. If you want to go ahead and start the presentation, I will make it as soon as they're done.
Got it.
Just through the chair, I'll go ahead and introduce staff. So Lisa McCall, Deputy Director. We have with us today Associate Planner Paria Safe, and she's partnered with Supervisor and Principal Planner Samuel Gutierrez. And we also have Fire Staff Alex Goff with us today. I'll go ahead and hand it over to Paria to start the presentation. Before she begins, it's just important to note that the commissioners may recognize this particular property, as it was before the Planning Commission last May in 2023. There was an appeal that was submitted to go to the board. However, a new application was submitted, or modified project, by the applicant. So it's essentially a new project before you today.
Thank you.
And to the chair, I do have the Levine Act announcement language that we can do first. Item number five is subject to the Levine Act. Any party or their agents must disclose on the record a contribution of more than $250 made to a commissioner, as described on page three of the agenda. Participants who have a financial interest and their agents are requested to make a similar disclosure. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Staff may proceed with their presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair O'Donohue and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Paria Safe, Project Planner, for item number five on the agenda. The project before you is a concurrent land use application for building site approval, design review tier three, and grading approval. This project is heard by the Planning Commission, as it is a tier three design review application for a resident that is over 12,500 square feet. First, I will go over the general information about the project. The property is located on the west side of the Glen Una Drive, and is within the urban service area of the city of Saratoga. The general plan designation of the property is urban service area, which is shown by USA. It is Zon Urban Hillside Residential, with a design review combining district overlay, which is shown by RHS-D1. The size of the lot is 0.76 acre, and it has an average slope of 6%. And the existing and the proposed use of the property is single-family residence. The subject parcel is currently developed with a single-family residence located in the center of the lot, and a detached garage to the west of the residence. There is also a pool at the southwest corner of the house. The existing property doesn't currently take access from Glen Una Drive, which is a county-maintained road to the east of the property, and is accessed from the existing access road along the northern side of the lot. There are 16 trees on the site, and the project proposes to remove seven trees. Among them, three are ordinance-protected trees, including two Atlas Cedar and one Coast Redwood. The protected trees are shown by crosses in darker green on this slide, and the lighter green crosses are not protected trees. According to the submitted RBS report, all these three trees that are proposed to be removed are in poor conditions, and are recommended to be removed. The project includes demolition of the existing two-story ranch-style single-family residence, and the detached garage, and modification of the existing pool. The proposal includes a new two-story single-family residence, including an attached garage, and also a detached accessory dwelling unit. Grading quantities associated with this project includes 881 cubic yards of cut and 174 cubic yards of fill. The project includes 7,139 square feet of landscaping, and proposes 20 24-inch box California native trees as a replacement for the removal of tree ordinance-protected trees, which exceed the required replacement ratio prescribed by the County Tree Preservation Guideline. As the Planning Commission may recall, a similar project for this property was heard at the May 25, 2023 hearing, and the previous application also requested a building site approval, design review tier three, and grading approval for the construction of a new single-family residence, and that application was approved by the Planning Commission. However, on October 27, 2023, the applicant submitted a modified application, which required the project to come back to the Planning Commission for a review, as the house size is over 12,500 square feet. As you can see in the table in this slide, the modified application includes a reduction of 1,408 square feet in building area, as well as a 1 feet 2 inch reduction in the height compared to the original proposal. Additionally, the proposed landscape area has been reduced by 540 square feet for a larger usable yard area. This adjustment requires an additional minor grading, including 222 cubic yards of cut, to ensure proper drainage of the site. The project has been reviewed in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and the proposed project qualifies for a categorical exemption for construction of one single-family residence and associated improvements. Applicable findings, policies, and guidelines to this project include zoning ordinance development standards, design review findings and guidelines, grading approval findings, and hillside development guidelines, and general plan policies. Analysis of how the project meets those requirements will be discussed in the following slide. The proposed project satisfies all development standards for the primary residence and ADU in the RHS zoning district, including the 35 feet maximum height and two stories, and a minimum of 30 feet front setback, 25 feet rear setback, and 20 feet side setback for the proposed single-family residence, and 16 feet maximum height, 30 feet front setback, and 4 feet rear and side setback for the proposed ADU. Also, the proposed pool meets the setback standards of at least 5 feet from any property lines or right-of-way. The proposed development would have the lowest visibility from the Santa Clara Valley Viewshed, as it is located on a side with gentle slope of 6% and is surrounded by a mountainous hillside, which is heavily vegetated with mature trees, as it can be seen on the photos in this slide. Moreover, the proposed landscape plan includes 20 24-inch box California native trees, as well as strawberries, all around the proposed development, to provide additional screening. The design of the proposed residence incorporate articulated facade, and multiple wall planes, and roof lines, and details such as columns and rhythmic windows, which produce patterns of light and shadows. In addition, the proposed exterior facade utilize multiple materials, such as limestone and earth-ton color, which all have a light reflectivity value of 45 or less. The proposed residence also conforms with the characteristic of the surrounding neighborhood in terms of architectural styles, as the neighborhood is comprised of an eclectic mixture of architectural styles, including ranch style, French shadow, Mediterranean, and contemporary design. The size of the proposed project is also compatible with adjacent residences. Therefore, the project will not be obtrusive or stand out compared to other development in the immediate vicinity, and is compatible with the neighborhood. For these reasons, project meets design review For these reasons, project meets design review findings, policies, and guidelines. The total associated grading quantities include 881 cubic yards of cut and 174 cubic yards of fill. The proposed grading would be necessary to expand the building paths and establish the proposed improvements. The proposed grading minimizes any disturbance of the natural terrain and doesn't disturb any sensitive biological and cultural resources, and is consistent with the general plan policies. Therefore, the project meets grading findings and hillside development guidelines. Staff finds that the project is consistent with the applicable findings, regulations, and policies for approval, and recommends that the Planning Commission accept SEQA exemption and grant the concurrent land use application for building site approval, design review tier three, and grading approval, subject to the conditions of approval. As it has been discussed in the staff report, staff has received a public comment letter regarding this project, which states concern regarding the width of the access road along the northern property line. Staff is available to respond to any question that the commissioners may have regarding the public comment letter and any other question related to this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff regarding their presentation? Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. One is, I think I brought this up in the previous, the original proposal, is the county landscaping requirements, does this meet them? Because I noted when I did the calculations, about only 22% of the lot is actually landscaped, and it is a tremendous amount of hardscape on that. Is that, is that, is there any criteria for landscaping in regards to actual plant material on a, on a lot?
Through the chair, just for a point of clarification. Commissioner Moore, are you referring to our water-efficient landscaping ordinance? Or which specific?
Well, that, well, that would certainly relate to it, but I just, I was also thinking even just more general, just, just curious, because it was a particularly low percentage that's actually landscaped compared to virtually any other, you know, in a, in a single-family home kind of neighborhood. So I was just wondering.
Just general development standards?
Yeah.
If I may, through the chair, the county doesn't have any regulation that limits the area that they can build a yard. So long they comply with the required setback for the building, they will be fine.
Okay, so, so it could be 0%?
Yes.
Interesting, something to think about in the future then. Okay.
If I may, Principal Planner Samuel, just clarification. What Associate Planner Paria Safe was referring to was the like kind of backyard, sideyard areas. There is a development standard regulation for the front yard paved area, which is, starts at the front of the building to the front property line. And this project is consistent with that requirement. You'll see just a horseshoe driveway in the front, but it's not completely paved over. So that would be the limitation. That's on balance with the M. Weelo standards, which is the water-efficient requirements.
Sure, sure. Okay, all right. Well, I just, something that was, just struck me. And then what, I just wanted to check, I did want to go over the concerns addressed in the letter that we received? And is this appropriate time to, to review that? Or would that be better at a later time?
Through the chair, it's at the, it's at the chairs.
I, maybe after public comment, we could discuss that?
Sure. Sounds good.
Vice Chair Belska.
Yeah, just had a question. How is the primary access to this property defined? Given that, I guess the current property is only accessed from one of the two roads. The new property is accessed from two, two roads. So what would be the definition of the, the primary access to that residence?
Through the chair, there are two different terms here. One is the fire access, and the other one is going to be the access to the property. So for the fire access, the term has been defined in the CAL FIRE code, that this is the path that the fire truck would take from the fire station to the point that they can provide acts, that they can provide services to the property. But if you are going to talk about the access to the property that is considered to be ingress and egress, then the whole portion of the access road that's along the northern side of the property would be considered as access road to this property.
Just follow-up question. Is there a reason why those two are differently defined?
So the definition of CAL FIRE comes from a state. It's not, it has not been defined with the county. But their term is defined differently from the county definition.
If I may, through the chair, if I could clarify the question, are you asking Commissioner Belska if, what, what is the main access to the residence? Is it from Glen Una versus the other access road?
I, I am, but, but I mean, I think the, the answer did address my question.
Okay.
I had just one more quick question. I just was noting the, the existing residence, and what requirements does the county have in terms of, you know, recycling and otherwise, you know, making best use of what appeared to be a pretty nice home already on the property? Are there requirements for that, for county development?
If I may, that would be something that's found into the building code. That would be our, in accordance with CAL GREEN standards. So that's the building code, energy efficiency. So it'd be contained in there. It wouldn't live in the zoning code. So fortunately, we're not subject matter experts in the building code.
Okay, so, so yeah, this would be in terms of the demolition of the, okay. Yeah, because I know that there are requirements in various cities. I just didn't know how that addressed, is addressed by the county. Okay.
And just knowing offhand, I, I believe the county does require a certain percentage of the materials to be recycled. So that's, I think most agencies, if not all of them, require that. Any more questions from commissioners? Okay. Is the applicant present? Do they want to speak during public comment?
Yes, the applicant, Tom Sloan, is present in chambers, and I believe he wishes to speak.
Okay. How much time do you want to give the applicant?
I think we discussed 15 minutes total, 10 for opening comments, and then the applicant can use all 15 at the same time or reserve some portion for rebuttal or reply comments. So it's your, we'll stop the timer when you say, I'm done with your original comments. And let me turn.
Can you hear me?
We can.
We can hear you.
Great. This is fantastic. Okay. My name is Tom Sloan. I'm the project's architect on the second round, this round you have before you today. I want to thank staff. You guys did a marvelous job, and I'm not, I'm not even going to take 15 minutes because you did such a great job, Priya. I think, you know, we, this project in, in whole, just virtually meets all the code requirements, policies, you know, exemption from SEQA. I think, I think the discussion tonight is probably going to be about whether or not the fire department access, which, which has been approved, is, goes beyond what is required just for this project and, and will extend out into the neighborhood. And from my, from my vantage point, you know, the fire access to safely take this to, I think the fire department can, has enough distance around the structure with their hose length to remedy any kind of emergency. And so I'm here for any questions that you have, but I think I want to urge you to, you know, approve this project tonight, if you could. Thank you. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Rousier.
Yeah, can you just describe the, on the north where the access road is, the, the planned use by the, the property owners for that? Would there be any chance for parking there? Or is that in the areas that's, that's not paved?
There, I believe the, there, there won't be any parking on the side of the road. That's not, I think it's not permitted. And I think that's in, in the conditions of approval. I might suggest that we do, before the plans go in, I believe in the county here, we, we submit a construction management plan, something like that, correct? And so when we do that, we intend to put all the parking on the site, and, and it's likely that we won't even, we'll, we'll come in right off of Glen Una and park onsite from Glen Una. It'll all be fenced in, and I'm going to put, put down, you know, no parking on the construction fences along the private access road, because people, you know, do make mistakes, and we want to be real clear about that. So I think during, during construction, we should have that. I think that's, that's something that we should do. Is that, can I answer your question?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Vice Chair Belska.
Yeah, I have a question, although it might not be directed at the applicant, so I don't want to take his time if he's not the right person to answer that. So, so the applicant mentioned that the, the fire access, and, and staff mentioned fire access would be from Glen Una. So I just wanted to verify that all of the response agencies have agreed that they will not be driving down the side, the north access road. They will not be driving their vehicles up that road to respond to any emergencies at that property.
Yeah, Alex Goff with County Fire. I would state that when we respond, they're going to respond wherever they've seen fit to pull hose to where the fire is. As proposed, there's two different spots. There's the eastern portion of the property that has the looped driveway. And also on the north, there's a turnaround right at the entrance. It's on the side of the property. For the hose pull, the north section likely had to be taken for a smaller portion if the ADU had a fire. Hence why the turnaround's kind of in that spot. However, I do not believe that they're going to be driving past the property, but every situation's different, so it's kind of hard to say 100% that they're not going to drive to a certain spot. All depends on where the fire is and kind of what's going on. But the intent would be to park either on the eastern portion or potentially on the north, but likely not going past this parcel.
Sorry, not past, past the parcel or not, not past the turnaround?
So all depends on where the fire is at.
Okay, so potentially past the turnaround?
Potentially, if the ADU is on fire, then yeah. They don't pull right up to the structure, but usually pull 50 feet-ish or so away. So yeah, I can't say for certain they won't drive on the northern portion, but they likely wouldn't drive very far down it.
Where is the hydrant located in relation to the property?
It's on the, the eastern portion. It's at the front, so kind of southeastern.
Through the chair, we can put a visual up if, if you desire. Commissioner Belska, we can put the site plan up if it's on there.
Do you want them to?
Yeah, if we could just quickly see where the, where the hydrant is. Yeah, that would be great.
And point to the area using our mouse.
Yeah. Yes, in the region of the mouse right there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from commissioners? All right, seeing none. Are there any speakers?
We do have three speakers on the item, two in chambers and one in the Zoom room. The first speaker is Alan Guyberson. If you'd like to approach the podium, you will have two minutes to speak. And it looks like Meg Guyberson will actually be speaking. If you want to approach the podium, there is a microphone built into it.
This is the microphone?
Yes, and we can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. My name's Meg Guyberson. My first question, as have you received, you should have received by email, the 17-page letter that we submitted yesterday. Has everyone submitted that? It has pages of pictures of how the roadway is obstructed currently, that access road. Did you receive that?
That was all delivered to the commissioners.
Okay, thank you. So you have received two letters then? You received the one that was submitted February, earlier in February. Okay, thank you. We've consistently asked for adequate safety and fire emergency access on our little access road that we live at the end of. It's supposed to be 20 feet. In 2013, the project right across from this project was required to do 20 feet of pavement along that road, and that was supposed to be done by 2018. Excuse me, it was supposed to be done by 2015, but nine years later, there is still no 20-foot pavement there, although the fire, the SRA requirements do say there should be 20 feet of road for fire access. The staff claims that the act, the language in the conditions would be enough to make sure that there won't be any parking on the road that could possibly obstruct fire access. But that language was in the project approval from 2013, and it did not help. As you saw, there are a couple of numbers of pages of the obstructions that still occur on that drive. So we have to ask, that language is obviously insufficient. We ask the observance of the laws and regulations to be more than ceremonial.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is in the Zoom room, Paul Soto. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I don't know if this has ever been brought up as an issue, but I'd like to bring it up now. I mean, how much home does a person need? I mean, I, I mean, I don't want to get too much in their business, but they're using like a lot of resources of the county, of taxpayer money in order for them to get this pad. So I, there is a public interest in this, and so I have a couple of questions. Number one, how many kids do they have? I mean, how much space do you need? This is a 12,000 square foot home. Now, their bathroom is the size of my entire apartment. I'm not exaggerating. I am not exaggerating. Their walk-in closet is probably as big as my apartment. And, and, and so, so in this era of, of, you know, empathizing and sympathizing with people that don't even have 500, that don't even have 250 square feet in order to live, I think we need to start discussing putting a limit, because I don't care how much wealth the person has. That's not a relevant point. Just because you got it, just because you can, doesn't mean you should, or that you should be permitted to do it. You know, so what I'm looking for is, I'm looking for a ratio to be created and submitted so like. So like, hey man, if you ain't got 10 kids, if you ain't got the Brady Bunch in your family, well then, no, we ain't, no, you can't have 12,000 square feet of land in this area to build. No, it's just not going to happen. You know, we, we need to have some kind of, some kind of scale, some kind of metric that we can use as a formula in order to, because we ain't got a whole lot of space in the area. And like I said, just because the person comes to this country and, you know, it's got, you know, 50, 80 million to blow, doesn't mean that we as a county should accommodate that. And I resent the fact that we have a system that does. And so I think those questions need to be asked. What kind of metric is used in order to allow these kinds of us?
And that concludes our speakers.
I believe there was one more speaker.
Oh, you did, okay. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Alan Guyberson. We appreciate that the project is a bit smaller and a bit shorter than it was. Of course, if the house was 200 feet further north in Saratoga, it would be half the size. But our major concern, as we've always expressed, is our health and safety. Certainly, if the person in the ADU has a heart attack or a stroke, we would certainly want the first responders to get there. First responder came and talked to us at a block party in October and said the majority of their calls are not fire, it's for medical emergencies. As a retired medical director of Good Sam ICU, I know minutes are very important. And if I have a stroke or a heart attack, I want the ambulance to get there. And we need the 20 feet to get to our home. And as my wife said, previous development was supposed to have 20 feet, didn't. So we would certainly like that you could get us that we can, our lives are important and that we should have the 20 feet of paved surface to get there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now that concludes speakers on the item.
Okay, does staff have any additional comments they want to add before we close public comment? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring the item to the commission for discussion. All right, any, Commissioner Belska?
I don't know if, if this is pertinent or if this is something that we can ask about, but the, the speakers mentioned that the project across the street was required to pave 20 feet. Is that, is that accurate? Is that in the, in that project's conditions of approval?
If I may through the chair, so the access road that exists along the northern side of the property, because it's not a county-maintained road and it's a private access road, it's, it gets reviewed by land development engineering and fire marshal office. And when they are reviewing the private access road, they refer to the standards and policies manual that they have. So in that standards and policy manual, the width of the road used to be 20 feet for the private access road prior to January 1st, 2014. So that's why when they were in the process of getting permit for the neighboring property, they were conditioned to provide 20 feet wide road on, on that private access road. But after that, because the manual was updated and it required only the, the width of the private road to be 18 feet, then probably the county didn't ask them to do this improvement for 20 feet.
Thank you.
Your luck.
Any other items for discussion from commissioners? Commissioner Rousier?
Yeah, I just want to say I, I did visit the property a year ago when, when it came before, so that comment still stands. I just want to thank the public for those who offered their opinions and concerns. It's, it's always good to get public input. I just want to ask if I could, just, the fire department, the, the letter mentioned that the fire department approved or didn't quite say the access is adequate all, all the way through. So I just want to give the fire department, because there's a chance this is going to get appealed, just, just to get on record that you approved the plans in, in response to the, the letter, the comments made in the letter. Thank you.
Yes, and I can probably add a little clarification. So County Fire did approve what was proposed on these plans. The width has came up a few times, so I can speak of this project as it's the current code. The 18-foot for the county access is a portion of road that serves three or more parcels. And that's not the entirety of the parcel. It's typically where we're going to have to park to do our hose pulls. So if we can do our hose pull from the front of the property and not even take access on the side road, the north road, then we may not even look at that road. On this one, we did, because that's where they're proposing the turnaround, but we only did it for a short portion. We didn't do for the entirety of the road. So if the road continues on a few hundred feet or whatnot past this parcel, we're not reviewing that. We're only reviewing this project, this parcel. Did that answer the question, Chloe?
I just want to get it on the record. Thank you.
Copy.
Vice Chair Belska?
Yeah, so I do, I do have some, some concern with this. You know, it, if this parcel only had access exclusively from Glen Unna Drive, then it would certainly make sense that that would be the only road that Cal Fire would and should consider in their review. It seems like the access from the unnamed road will be the primary access for the resident and per, per the fire marshal, the fire marshal office. It, it sounds like there is possibility that fire and other safety vehicles would also take access from that road. But it seems like Cal Fire never, never reviewed or provided a ruling or opinion on the status of that road, which seems like an oversight on their part to have not considered the access on that road, as that road does front the property for, for quite a long distance beyond the end of the fire truck turnaround. So I just wanted to, to raise that as a, as a concern here.
Through the chair, there may be a point of clarification that staff would provide relating to Cal Fire and their review of this project. So I'll defer to Paria or Principal Planner, Sam.
To clear comments about the fire access, I have prepared one slide that if I may through the chair, I can go over that slide and explain the condition of this road and how Cal Fire reviewed the project and how we came up with recommending the approval of this project to the planning commission.
Please do.
Okay, thank you. So to start with, the project will have fire access to site from Hume Drive and Pepper Lane that leads to a small section of the Glen Unna Drive, as you can see on this slide. The fire access road have a width of at least 20 feet all the way to the site, and the project proposes a turnaround to be built at the intersection of the Glen Unna Drive and the private access road along the north side of the property. As the project, as the subject property is located in the state responsibility area, Cal Fire is primarily, primarily responder to fire and responsible for fire safety. The project has been routed to Cal Fire for review, and they reviewed that project for compliance with the state fire safe regulation and had, and they have approved the plans. Cal Fire has determined that the proposed improvement satisfies their requirements because pursuant to the California codes, a fire apparatus access road is a road that provides fire apparatus access from a fire station to a facility, building, or portion thereof. Therefore, according to this definition, the road measurements are specific to the property in question where fire access is needed to provide emergency services to the proposed structure and building, and it's not for the entire block. Following Cal Fire approval regarding fire safety, the staff has not found an access to impose additional improvement on the subject property, such as requiring the applicant to widen the entire access road along the northern boundary of the subject property. Because the proposed improvement to the private access road that includes widening a portion of the private road to 18 feet and a new hammerhead turnaround meets the county ordinance code requirements. The county fire code and fire access standard for the unincorporated county requires that the minimum drivable width of an access road be 18 feet in width and have a three-foot shoulder. Since the proposed improvements meet this requirement, there is no basis to require additional improvements to the private access road. In addition to the proposed improvements, condition number 43 requires the dedication of the remainder of the 20-foot half-street curvilinear right-of-way to the public and the county for private road purposes, along the private access road for future road improvements. This means that this access road will be eventually 40 feet wide. The complete improvements of the road will occur when all four properties accessing this road have dedicated their share for the right-of-way, and the road will become a county-maintained road. However, currently, there is no access to require this project to widen the road beyond what is required by the code. The road has been there for more than 70 years, and the existing house on the subject property has always taken its access from this road. The proposed project doesn't take away any portion of the road and doesn't make the road narrower. Instead, it proposes to improve a portion of the private access road to 18 feet wide and provide a hammerhead turnaround, as is required by the code, to allow fire services. Therefore, staff maintains that the proposed project is consistent with the standards set forth in the zoning ordinance, design review findings, grading approval findings, and applicable fire codes. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. On the private road, if, if, say, say somebody, you know, worst-case scenario, somebody parks their car in a manner where no traffic can get through, say, just beyond the fire turnaround, is there any, is there any remedy to remove that car?
The county doesn't have authority over private roads, so it's really up to the private property owners who share that road to police that, so.
So they would call their own tow truck, potentially?
I don't know how.
I think that's my understanding of it. Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Moore?
Yeah, just following up on that, so given that it's a private road, can conditions of approval include no parking and some other way to, because I mean, the photographs are pretty compelling in terms of blocking potential emergency access if there's anyone parked there? So what, what can be done?
The problem is, is that the private road is used, we can only condition this property and, you know, these applicants, we can't condition all the other users of the road or whether their guests park on the road. So it's, it's, we really don't have any legal mechanism to do that. Like, the, the private property owners could agree to put up signs saying no parking, but as I said earlier, that the policing of that would be up to them.
Okay.
And just to follow up on that, we couldn't even put a condition to that. Is that what you're saying?
I mean, you could, you could ask this applicant to put no parking signs on their portion of the road, but it, it is a shared road, so I don't even, you know, I mean, yeah, I mean, to the, I guess the question is whether the people are going to be parking on this particular property or in the easement area. I, I'm not sure how the road is laid out.
Right.
Yeah.
And it sounds like the applicant was going to put up no parking signs anyways.
Probably, yeah.
And through the chair, I'll just supplement, it's dependent on how the easement is written and prepared. So, you know, I would just caution the commission on conditioning without knowing the parameters of the easement.
Okay, any other questions? Anybody like to make a motion? All right, I'll make a, I'll make a motion. Let me find the paper. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the concurrent land use application. Do I need to read all of that? I need to read all of it, right? Okay.
Yes.
All right, let's be specific. I'll make a motion to approve the concurrent land use application consisting of building site approval, design review, tier three, and grading approval to allow the construction of a new 12,910-square-foot single-family dwelling, associated site improvements, and 1103-square-foot ADU on a .76-acre site, grading quantities 881 cubic yards of cut and 174 cubic yards of fill. California SEQA exempt pursuant to section 15303 of the SEQA guidelines.
I'll second.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Motion by myself and second by Commissioner Rousier. Can you call the roll?
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Escobar?
Yes.
Commissioner Rousier?
I approve.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Belska?
Yes.
Chairperson O'Donohue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Next item, number six. Receive report from LAFCO relating to an overview of the history and role of LAFCO.
And while we, we'll give it one minute just to allow staff to change out, but this is another one of the trainings that we've provided in the work plan for the planning commission over this fiscal year. And before us today, we have Nalima Palicella, I hope I said that properly, and she's our LAFCO executive officer. And we also have Dania Noel, who's a senior LAFCO analyst. And they've prepared a comprehensive training for us today on our LAFCO policies here at the county of Santa Clara. And we'll give it just a minute. I'm trying to say more to allow them to set up.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nalima Palicella. I'm the executive officer. My name is Nalima Palicchilla, I'm the executive officer at Santa Clara LAFCO. Joining me is Assistant Executive Officer, Dania Noel. Each of us has been with LAFCO for now over twenty years, and before that, both of us were planners at the County Planning Office. So it's, it's really good to be back here, and I'm happy to see faces and names on the Planning Commission who I know are very familiar with LAFCO, and with whom we've had an opportunity to work on various projects over the years. For those of you who are not as familiar with LAFCO, or who don't know too much about LAFCO, that's really not that unusual. We really appreciate this opportunity to make a presentation on LAFCO, and we hope by the end of this, you'll, you'll have a better understanding of LAFCO, and you'll understand why LAFCO matters in this county. So, thank you. Today, you'll learn about the history of LAFCO, why LAFCO was created, how we've come to have a very unique set of policies for growth management called the countywide urban development policies in this county, and you'll learn about LAFCO's mandate, how LAFCO achieves its purpose and mandate, and about some of the key LAFCO policies and programs that we have. It's quite a lengthy presentation, and we'll go as quickly as possible through this. So we'll begin with some history on the, and on the conditions that led to the creation of LAFCO and the adoption of our countywide urban development policies. Santa Clara County was once known as the Valley of Hearts Delight. Through the fifties, this valley was the largest fruit production and packing region in the world. What we now know as Sunnyvale, Mountain View, Mill Peters, Campbell, et cetera, were once covered with fruit orchards. At the end of World War II, there was a population and housing boom in California, and a surge of new residents settled in Santa Clara County. Next slide. So in the ten years between nineteen fifty and nineteen sixty, the population in Santa Clara County more than doubled, there was a fifty-five percent increase in population. And by the sixties, the landscape of Santa Clara County was undergoing radical change. Extensive suburban development was replacing the orchards and paving over farmland. Cities and the county competed for land and development to increase their tax base and accommodate the housing and provide the services needed for that housing and for the new residents. And there were annexation wars amongst the cities. Cities leapfrogged over undeveloped lands and annexed outlying lands, creating a patchwork pattern of city and county lands, as you can see on this map from the nineteen sixties. The colored areas on this map are the fifteen cities, and the gray areas are the unincorporated lands. On this map, you can also see examples of what are called cherry-stem annexations. For example, San Jose annexed land along Monterey Highway to reach lands to the south. You can see how Morgan Hill, for example, defensively annexed lands to the northeast to block San Jose from annexing further south in their vicinity. New cities were also formed to establish control over lands. Between nineteen fifty-two and nineteen fifty-seven, seven new cities were formed. There was also a proliferation of special districts created to provide services to all this development, and by the early sixties, we had sixty-three special districts that were created to provide services in the county. The result, of course, was ad hoc growth that was costly and difficult to serve, overlapping jurisdictions, confusing boundaries, and the permanent loss of valuable farmlands. Next slide. This was happening in other parts of the state as well, and in order to address this and prevent losses to the state's largest industry, which at that time was agriculture, then-Governor Pat Brown created a Commission on Metropolitan Area Problems. The recommendations from that commission were the basis for the state legislature to create LAFCOs in nineteen sixty-three. The legislature created LAFCOs, one in each county, and gave them the power to regulate local government boundaries with a mandate to preserve farmland and open space, to prevent urban sprawl, and to encourage efficient delivery of services through the orderly formation and development of local government agencies. Next slide. One of the first things that Santa Clara LAFCO did was to adopt boundary agreement lines in nineteen sixty-seven. These lines divided the county into fifteen pieces, indicating which lands could potentially be annexed into each city, and the thick red lines that you see on this map are the boundary agreement lines. This helped end the annexation wars and provided a stable foundation for the cities, the county, and LAFCO to have discussions on how to manage growth over the long term. These discussions ultimately led to the development of what are now known as the countywide urban development policies. Next slide. The countywide urban development policies establish the role of the county, the cities, and LAFCOs in determining when and where urban development should take place. The three legs of the policy framework are, number one, urban development and services should take place on lands annexed to cities and not within unincorporated areas. Number two, the cities are responsible for planning for urban development within explicitly adopted urban service areas whose expansion is subject to LAFCO approval. And number three, unincorporated lands within a city's urban service area should eventually be annexed into the surrounding city so that the city has urban service responsibility and land use authority over all lands within their urban service area. So LAFCO, the fifteen cities, and the county adopted these policies, and they made mutual commitments to implement them. Next slide. So the cities committed to plan for and accommodate urban growth within their boundaries. Between nineteen seventy-two and nineteen seventy-three, each of the fifteen cities proposed urban service area boundaries, and LAFCO adopted these boundaries. On this map, you'll see the thin red lines around the cities, those are the urban service area boundaries. The cities also agreed that further modification of the urban service areas would be subject to LAFCO approval. Next slide. So the county committed to no longer compete with the cities for urban development. Outside urban service areas, the county agreed to keep rural lands rural and limit urban uses and densities on unincorporated lands. The county also adopted general plan designations to limit allowable uses and increased minimum lot sizes to twenty acres per parcel, and in some cases, all the way up to a hundred and sixty acres per parcel based on slope density. For lands within the urban service area, the county adopted policies to facilitate annexation of the lands to the city. The county did two things. The county established a procedure to refer any major development proposals on lands in the city's urban service area to the city, and provide the city with an opportunity to annex the land prior to its development in the county. And the second thing that the county did was to adopt ordinances to require that any new major development within city urban service areas must conform to that city's general plan. Next slide. Santa Clara County's population has nearly tripled to two million residents since the creation of LAFCOs in nineteen sixty-three. Today, ninety-five percent of the county's residents live within city urban service areas. The urban service areas occupy less than a quarter of the county's total land area. Thirty percent of the county's total land area is protected open space. The map on the left is from the sixties, which you've seen in a previous slide, and on the right is a more recent map of the county, and on this map, you'll see that the county's urban footprint, which is shown in the tan color, remains relatively unchanged from the sixties. The consistent implementation of the countywide urban development policies has been influential in limiting the outward expansion of the cities, and has allowed agencies to work on preservation of a network of protected open space lands that surround the urban areas and in close proximity to the urban areas, and that network of protected open space is shown in that green, light green, and the dark green that you see on that map represents the remaining very small amount of prime farmland that we have left in this county, which is mostly around the cities of Morgan Hill and Gilroy, and south of San Jose in the Coyote Valley area. Next slide. So what is LAFCO? LAFCO stands for the Local Agency Formation Commission. LAFCO is a state-mandated independent local agency, and LAFCO's mission is, in twenty-twelve, our commission adopted this mission statement to promote sustainable growth and good governance in Santa Clara County. As you can see, our mandate from the state forms the core of our mission, and the commission also added statements about facilitating financial sustainability and promoting accountability and transparency, recognizing that these are key components for ensuring good governance. LAFCOs were created in nineteen sixty-three by what is known as the Knox-Nisbett Act. Over the years, there've been many, many changes to LAFCO law, and in two thousand, there was a major overhaul of LAFCO law, and it came to be known as the Cortez-Knox-Hertzberg Local Government Reorganization Act of two thousand, more easily known as the CKH Act. This includes a body of law in the California Government Code, starting with fifty-six thousand. Some facts about LAFCO. LAFCOs, as I said, are independent local agencies, they're formed under state law, and they implement state law. LAFCOs are more like an arm of the state, but with local decision-makers. LAFCO decisions are final, and they cannot be appealed to other government bodies. LAFCO does not have land use authority. LAFCO considers land use in its decision-making capacity, and LAFCO decisions affect land use, but LAFCO cannot dictate land use. Because LAFCOs were created to achieve the specific purposes of the legislature in each county, they are often referred to as the watchdog of the legislature. So who is, who, who's, who makes up LAFCO? That is determined by state law. Santa Clara LAFCO is composed of seven commissioners plus alternates for each category, these, you'll see some familiar faces here. We have two members from the County Board of Supervisors, one council member from the city of San Jose, as it has a permanent seat on LAFCO, one council member from any of the other fourteen cities, and in twenty thirteen, Santa Clara LAFCO added two special district board members, one member from any of the eighteen independent special districts, and one member from the Valley Water Board. And these three, and these six commissioners select a public member, all except the public member, member are local elected officials. There is a very unique provision in state law related to the allegiance of LAFCO commissioners, and we refer to it as wearing the LAFCO hat when sitting on LAFCO. State law requires that LAFCO commissioners must exercise independent judgment and represent the interest of the public as a whole in furthering the purposes of LAFCO, and not solely the interests of their appointing authority. LAFCO contracts with the county for staffing. We are county employees, and as the executive officer, I report directly to the commission and take policy direction from the commission, and also LAFCO contracts with a private firm for legal counsel. LAFCO is required by law to annually adopt a budget, and state law requires that the cities, the county, and special district fund LAFCO costs. With that, I'll turn it over to Dania, who'll go over more of what LAFCO does and how LAFCO achieves its mission.
So as you've heard today, LAFCO's purpose is outlined in state law, while also acknowledging the need to consider local conditions and circumstances. LAFCO achieves its purpose by regulating the boundaries and service extensions of cities and special districts, and by conducting service reviews. LAFCO utilizes state law, CKH Act, the countywide urban development policies, and local LAFCO policies to determine whether a proposal is consistent with its purpose and goals. LAFCO has regulatory power over city and district boundary changes. There are different types of boundary changes, and the two most common ones are annexation or detachment from a city or a special district. This is when cities would add lands to their boundaries, or a special district would add lands, or where you would remove lands from a city or a special district. There are also other types of boundary changes listed here, those are much rarer, and they're more complicated. Another important regulatory power of LAFCO is service extensions outside of an agency's boundaries. So anytime a special district or a city wants to provide services outside its boundaries, it must first seek LAFCO approval. And also, when a special district wants to provide new or different services than what the district was originally created for, they must first seek LAFCO approval. And LAFCO also reviews and regulates urban service area and sphere of influence amendments. LAFCO's jurisdiction is countywide, and we have authority over fifteen cities and twenty-seven, seven special districts in terms of the boundaries. There are eight dependent districts in the county and nineteen independent districts. These districts serve various parts of the county, and they provide various types of services to those areas. LAFCO does not regulate certain types of boundaries, as shown on this slide, and what's interesting here is you'll notice that LAFCO does not have authority over private water companies, or mutual water companies, even though their boundaries could influence growth quite a bit in the unincorporated area. LAFCO also conducts service reviews to identify governance and service issues, and to recommend actions to resolve or help address those issues, and LAFCO can conduct special studies. I want to talk to you today about two key LAFCO planning boundaries and typical LAFCO applications. The first one is the urban service area. Each of you has a large wall map of Santa Clara County that we provided with you today. This map shows the different cities, and it also shows the different city boundaries. On that large wall map, the urban service area is shown as a thin red line. The urban service area delineates land currently annexed, or lands a city intends to annex and provide with services and develop within a five-year period. Typically, these urban service areas exclude natural resource lands, or lands that are deemed generally unsuited for urban development, such as very high fire hazard areas, baylands, flood plains, mountainous, mountainous lands, seismic, or geologic hazard areas. Any changes to the urban service area require LAFCO approval, and those type of applications must come to LAFCO by a city council resolution. Once lands are within the urban service area, LAFCO has no authority over annexation, and the city is able to annex those lands and develop them at a time they see fit to. This is a very unique provision in state law, specific just to Santa Clara County, and this is due to the longstanding policies that we have in place whereby our cities and the county have very different functions. So I want to talk about one type of LAFCO application, this is a city-conducted annexation. So when a city wants to annex lands, they must first be within its urban service area. And again, we have special provisions in state law that allow our cities to annex lands in their urban service area without LAFCO approval. In these cases, LAFCO's sole role here is to just review for completeness, and to finalize and record a city's annexation documents. These type of annexations don't come to LAFCO for a hearing. Another type of application is the urban service area amendment, and this is a, this is really LAFCO's major responsibility, is to review and consider. And this is a, this is really LAFCO's major responsibility is to review and consider cities' urban service area amendment proposals in order to ensure orderly city growth. And we must consider several factors when we review a city urban service area amendment. And they're listed here on this slide. We want to know, is there a real need for that urban service expansion? Are there vacant or underutilized lands within the city's boundaries where such a project could occur? Does this proposal prematurely convert or adversely impact our farmlands? Does the city have the ability to provide and finance services and infrastructure to the proposal area without lowering levels of service within their current boundaries? We want to know that the boundaries are logical and orderly. We also want to know, has the city annexed their unincorporated islands? We want to know if the proposal's consistent with the city and county general plan. We're also more recently required to look at whether it's located within a very high fire hazard area. So there's a lot of factors that LAFCO has to look at when we get an urban service area amendment application. The Sphere of Influence, or SOI, is another key planning boundary and it's defined in state law. For special districts, the Sphere of Influence is a plan for the probable physical boundaries and service area of a special district as determined by LAFCO. And on that large wall map that you have, city spheres of influence boundaries are shown in a thick golden yellow line. And you'll see on the map, some of our cities have fairly large spheres of influence, such as San Jose, that reaches way out into the ridgeline of Mount Hamilton. A city sphere of influence doesn't necessarily indicate lands that a city will annex or provide with urban services. For our cities, and due to the countywide urban development policies, spheres are less important since our urban service area boundaries are really serving the objectives of spheres. So I want to talk a little bit about Sphere of Influence amendments. We don't see too many of these types of applications at LAFCO. State law does require that we have to consider and prepare certain written determinations to support a LAFCO Sphere of Amendment decision. And we would look at things like land use, the need and capacity of public facilities and services, and a few other things. Another consideration we would have for a Sphere of Influence amendment is its consistency with the city's urban service area. And this is because special districts that have sphere expansions that would extend urban services, like sewer or water, to promote new development in the unincorporated areas outside of an urban service area. I know that's a lot I've said there. They are not discouraged. And this is because such sphere amendments really wouldn't be consistent with our longstanding countywide urban development policies. And then another type of application we hear, and this is also very rare, are annexation proposals where LAFCO actually hears them, unlike the first ones that I spoke about where our cities hear those annexations. This would occur if a city annexation was to include lands that were outside of an urban service area. Those types of requests would have to be heard by LAFCO. And really, those type of annexations are strongly discouraged with very limited exceptions. Special district annexations, they also must be heard by LAFCO. Lands proposed for annexation to a special district or to a city must be within its sphere of influence. And state law requires LAFCO to consider many factors in reviewing annexation requests, including things like impacts to agriculture and open space lands. And the last type of application I want to talk about are service extensions outside of a jurisdictional boundary. They're also called out-of-agency contracts for service, or OACS. We have a lot of acronyms here. When a city or a district wants to provide services outside of its boundaries, it must first seek LAFCO approval. And again, such requests are generally discouraged. And this is because they're inconsistent with the county urban development policies, which call for cities to provide urban services within their boundaries and not outside. Out-of-agency contracts for service also diminish the meaning and purpose for having boundaries in the first place. However, we have approved some out-of-agencies on a very limited basis to address existing threats to public health and safety, where immediate annexation to a city is not feasible. And an example would be, say, a property up in Holiday Lake Estates where the septic system is failing, the lot is small, it can't be repaired, it can't be replaced. We've done a couple of out-of-agencies where Morgan Hill has on a, on a, for public health and safety purposes, allowed them to connect so that the property owner isn't red-tagged and doesn't have to move out of the property. And similarly, that would apply for a situation where a well is failing and can't be replaced, repaired. But again, we've done these on a very limited basis. State law limits LAFCO's use of out-of-agency contracts for service. And it requires LAFCO to consider many factors, such as growth-inducing impacts. So how are LAFCO decisions made? This will sound probably pretty familiar to you guys as the planning commission. We receive a boundary change application, staff reviews it, we prepare a notice of public hearing, we prepare a staff report with our recommendations where we take into consideration state law and the locally adopted policies that the commission has. And then we have a public hearing and our commission considers public testimony, considers the staff report. And each commissioner makes an independent judgment on how to further the purpose of LAFCO and how to take into consideration the interest of the public as a whole. We also have a couple of programs. We have our island annexation program and our service review program. Now, islands are unincorporated lands located within a city's urban service area. They are a legacy of the annexation wars that occurred in the county prior to LAFCO's creation. And it's been a longstanding shared goal of LAFCO, the county and the cities to annex the islands. We have a program that encourages cities to annex unincorporated islands. We weigh fees. We try to work with the county to prioritize maintenance or correction of things within the county roads. It's a pretty robust program. And through that, we've worked with 11 cities and the county, and we've annexed over 112 islands. Nearly 20,000 people have moved from the unincorporated area into a city since our program has started. We also have service reviews. And this began in 2000. The state legislature required us to conduct these service reviews. And these are really comprehensive studies about how service is provided in the county. And we needed to document our findings. And through that, we've been able to promote more efficient service delivery in our, in our cities and our special districts. Those reports, we've looked at things like duplication of services. We've looked at other options for how services could be provided or governance could be done better. We've looked at, are there opportunities for two cities to work together and share a service? We've looked also at, well, we found that some of our districts were providing some service connections and not going through the LAFCO process. So you, you don't know what you're going to discover when you work on these service reviews, but they've been very interesting. We recently completed a countywide service review for fire. We've done past service reviews for specific cities, for specific districts. We've looked at water, we've looked at wastewater. All of our reviews are available on the LAFCO website. So you'll see LAFCO's work yields real public benefits to the county. And it's helped the county maintain the quality of life through dramatic changes and growth. And one of those benefits is protecting open space and farmland. This diagram represents LAFCO's policy structure for farmland preservation. LAFCO's goal is to first avoid impacts to farmlands. And we do this by steering growth away from farmland into already existing urbanized areas. Our second goal is to minimize those impacts to resources. And we look to make sure that the lands are being efficiently used and that the growth patterns are efficient. And only as a last resort, when no other options are available or those options have been exhausted, does LAFCO look to mitigation. In 2007, we adopted agricultural mitigation policies. We were, I believe, the first LAFCO in the whole state to have such policies. Our goal for those policies was to provide guidance to the applicants and cities as to what LAFCO would be expecting when it comes to mitigation, all while also knowing that there would not be full mitigation for the loss of farmland because farmlands are an irreplaceable, non-renewable resource. So how and where we decide to accommodate growth has a direct impact on open space and farmland preservation. Sustainable growth, and by that we mean compact development within the urban footprint and land preservation, go hand in hand. This is how we'll help build climate resiliency and create vibrant, livable communities. In the last 30 and more years, many cities have limited their outward expansion and have been able to accommodate large amounts of growth within their existing boundaries. The city of San Jose, for example, was the poster child for urban sprawl for years, maybe decades. But in its most current general plan, it does not anticipate expanding outward, is looking to accommodate its growth within its existing boundaries, which has allowed the city of San Jose to partner with other agencies and organizations to protect open space farmland in areas such as Coyote Valley. So our choice today really is, is it going to be sprawl? Are we going to choose compact development with its ongoing benefits? It's LAFCO's job to understand and learn from the past and to help guide when and where growth occurs.
Okay, we'll, we'll wrap this up. You've heard how Santa Clara LAFCO plays an influential role in creating livable communities in this county. Yet, LAFCO is relatively unknown in the community. And our commission believes that to become even more effective in achieving our mission, we should make sure that local communities have a good understanding of LAFCO's goals and the role and the particular importance of LAFCO in this era of climate change. So to this end, in 2018, Santa Clara LAFCO adopted a public communications and outreach plan, the first and only LAFCO in the state to do so. This presentation that you see, the city's wall map that you have and the What Is LAFCO brochure that you've all received, the LAFCO website, all of that are a result of that effort. We had a consultant team help us with this. And actually, one of your very own, very talented staff was a part of that consultant team in his previous avatar. So in terms of collaboration and partnerships, as you've heard, LAFCO and the county share many common goals. And we operate within a common longstanding growth management policy framework. So there are always opportunities for collaboration and mutual support as we tackle various issues. We have a good working relationship with the county planning staff. And a very quick plug for the planning office's amazing GIS team. They maintain the boundaries for us. They, they make the best-looking maps for our reports. This, this slide gives you a look at some of the awards that Santa Clara LAFCO has won from the American Planning Association and from Cal LAFCO. Cal LAFCO is the state association of LAFCOs. Then we'll move on. So last summer, we celebrated the 60th anniversary of LAFCO. We had a wonderful reunion of staff and commissioners from over the last six decades. Let's see. So this is, this is how you can reach us. The LAFCO website, again, is a great resource if you want to learn more about LAFCO or about other local governments, such as special districts in this county. You can also sign up to receive more information on specific projects or to receive LAFCO meeting agendas. That's, that's really it. Thank you once again for your time and for your attention. And we are really happy to be here and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
And we're happy to have you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Do any commissioners have any questions for the LAFCO staff? Commissioner Moore.
Great to see you, Nalima and Dunia. Great presentation. I love this material. And yeah, I, I have a long history also in previous positions, working with LAFCO and understand the importance of its role and also how incredibly well-run Santa Clara County's LAFCO is. They deserve all of the awards, you know, that they've received. And I just had a couple of, of questions. You had mentioned, I think it was Nalima had mentioned that there, there, there's been some relationship with county planning in terms of GIS and things. But are there other communications or coordinations that are occurring with county planning outside of the, the GIS mapping support?
Thank you. Thank you for that question. And we have had implemented quarterly meetings with the county planning office staff. With COVID and everything else, those meetings have not been happening as regularly as we would like. And we just had a conversation today about restarting those meetings because, as you can imagine, there's a lot going on that, that we really need to coordinate on. And we are planning to start those back up.
Great. Yeah, that's great. And then the other just general question was just if you might comment on some of the challenges, controversies, other, you know, I guess I could call them challenges that LAFCO maybe has faced over the last five, 10 years. And you know, what, what does that look like? You know, particularly involving, yeah, expansion requests and things like that. How has that been over the recent decade or so for LAFCO?
Sure, I can go over a little bit of that. As Dunia said in her presentation, there are a number of cities that are doing great things about accommodating growth within their existing boundaries. Large amounts of population without growing outwards, they're growing up, they're growing in. But we do have challenges with some cities wanting to grow out as well. And they have come to LAFCO with requests for urban service area amendments. Many of these cities, unfortunately, the lands surrounding those cities have been farmlands. We've had requests where they're looking to convert a lot of farmland to accommodate growth. And they have been very challenging applications for LAFCOs. And LAFCO has had to take a lot of things into consideration and some of them have been rejected, particularly because of the availability of vacant land within the existing city limits. And also because of the potential adverse impacts to the surrounding farmlands. So those, those have been, those have been a big concern. Another big concern is cities wanting to extend urban services out into the unincorporated area to facilitate new development. As again, Dunia mentioned, we are not as concerned about these service extensions when they're, when they're taking place to address existing health and safety conditions. But when it is to accommodate new, new growth in the unincorporated areas, that's a concern because that is very much against LAFCO. that's a concern, because that is very much against Lafco policies. It harkens back to the time of why Lafco was created, when there was random growth and hapless add extensions of services. So that has been something that we've been really concerned about. So those are the two, those are the two big ones. Urban service area expansion requests and service requests for outside the city's boundaries. Anything else, Dunia? I think those are the two. Yeah, I think those are the two big ones.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rousier.
A couple of things. Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I always love drinking from a fire hose. And the projected population growth, it says 2020 estimated, and here we are, 2024. And some would actually say our population may be peaking, because a lot of people are leaving. So even though we still need more housing, have you guys thought of any other projections other than the one that you listed there for the, whatever it was, 2030 or whatever? That's one question. And then just kind of a follow-up. What sort of similar urban areas do you think kind of got growth right? Meaning they had plenty of infrastructure at the time they were expanding. The Bay Area is somewhat unique in that we have so many different cities that have all tried to expand and make a name for themselves essentially. And so there's the need for city planning, but also regional planning, which you have ABAG and other organizations trying to do that. But when it comes to just us even looking at the county, it's, it can be confusing at times, trying to figure out, how do you get 15 cities to sort of work to common goals? And so my question is sort of, since we represent the county, how, what can we as a county do to encourage the goals of Lafco? And specifically, in the area of island annexations, what else can be done? I know there was a big push and a lot of them did go. But for the ones that are still there, to me, that seems, from a county perspective, a huge waste of resources trying to service these tiny little pockets, especially the sheriff and other things on that. So is there anything else that we can do? And the final question would be, the San Martin Water District, what is that? I know we have the West San Martin Water, and there's a couple of water jurisdictions. So I was just wondering what that is for my people in San Martin. Thank you.
I guess I might take the first question. I don't know if I have the answer of who's getting it right. But I can tell you, in the Lafco world, as we've talked to other Lafcos in other counties across the state, they're amazed that we've been able to have a county-wide urban development policy like this and keep it going for decades. All the time they ask us, how did you accomplish that? We're trying to accomplish that today. We can't get it done. And honestly, we don't really have a great answer. This was before our time. It was the 70s. A lot of great things happened in the 70s. But it's hard to get that done now. And so it may seem like we're struggling, but I think in some ways, because of those policies, we're ahead of the curve. But that doesn't mean it's easy or the work isn't done or there aren't challenges. But I just wanted to share that with you. So I don't know who's getting it done or who's getting it done better than us. I think everybody's struggling, but we have a good framework and others are trying to figure out how to get there. And I think I'll turn it over to Nalima for the rest.
That's true. Every time we go to a conference, we get asked this question. And to think that Santa Clara County had these policies back, they were created back in the 70s, and there are still counties trying their best to get to where we were back then and we are right now. So we are in that regard, we're sort of ahead. But it all depends on implementation of those policies. So I'll take some of the questions that I remember as the easy ones. San Martin County Water District and the West San Martin Water Works, I guess that's what it's called. The San Martin County Water District is a special district subject to Lafco jurisdiction. So any changes to its boundaries, anytime the district wants to provide service outside, all that has to come to Lafco. Whereas the West San Martin Water Works is a private water company, and Lafco has no jurisdiction over that. Their boundaries are regulated, I believe, by the CPUC. And they don't really follow Lafco's jurisdiction. And that's somewhat unfortunate, not necessarily in that case, but in other instances where it's a problem again because of the policies we have in the county of not providing urban services such as water and sewer in the unincorporated areas and not allowing development that would need services beyond onsite services, that sort of goes against that policy and becomes difficult. What other questions? The island annexations. The county has been a great partner in island annexations. All that we've achieved couldn't have been achieved without the county and Lafco working together. The county has covered costs for preparing maps, for preparing various reports for the islands. They've prioritized road maintenance in those islands that have been slated for annexation so that those can be prioritized and serve as an incentive for cities to move forward with island annexations. They've covered the State Board of Equalization fees. Not large amounts, but it still counts. And they've been very cooperative in working with the cities and coordinating land use, building permits and things like that when island annexations have been planned for any city.
My question's more moving forward. How can we get any, if not all, of the rest of the islands?
Yeah, I think we've gotten all the easy islands annexed. So now the islands that we have left over are the larger islands. These are islands larger than 150 acres, which means they don't fall under the streamlined annexation, island annexation law that allows these annexations to happen without protest proceedings. So they will have to go through protests. And it's a much, much more involved process. There isn't a simple answer to that. These islands are large ones. And examples are like Burbank and Alum Rock and Cambrian, which it really takes a lot. And we've seen over the years that they are slowly chipping away at these islands, parcel by parcel. But it's going to take a long time. It's going to take a lot of planning, particularly on the part of the cities, to do some advanced planning. We've had some conversations with, for example, Burbank. We've had some conversations with the city of San Jose and the Burbank sanitary district to talk about how services will be transferred or transitioned. But we haven't really gotten too far on those. Lot of complexities and infrastructure issues and development issues that come up.
Is the pushback more from the cities or from the property owners or both?
It's, we haven't gotten as far as property owners in this case, but we've had historically a lot of pushback from property owners in those areas. So I think that's still in the minds of cities. If there is going to be a very time-intensive effort that's needed, cities have a lot going on, dealing with the housing crisis and whatnot. They really don't, I think it hasn't risen up to the top of their priority list for projects.
The squeaky wheel. And then population projections, do you have any?
You know, Lafco really doesn't do any population projections. We rely on the projections that ABAG does, sometimes what the Department of Finance does. We look at those projections. And in our service reviews and in any of our analysis, we go back to one of the other sources, sometimes the census, if more current information is available from the US Census. But otherwise, we don't necessarily do any projections ourselves.
Because most of the estimates that I've seen are still using 1.9 million for the county, and especially when they had all the COVID statistics and everything that were going around. And I know a lot of people have been moving out. And so, and there's still a lot that are maybe not counted in the census and different things to, which they have to do estimates of. But I just, when it came up for the RENA allocations and everything, I'm still starting to question some of the projections that they have, just because I see it differently. So, but again, thank you for the report and the work that you guys do. I really appreciate it. And I like these brochures too. It's really helpful. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levy.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. It was outstanding, and I do appreciate all the work you're doing. It's very important work, and you're doing an excellent job. I had a question about urban service boundaries. Generally, theoretically, you're supposed to be providing five years of development within an urban service boundary. Now each of these jurisdictions is separate. And if San Jose has 20 years of space and Morgan Hills has four, Morgan Hill is able to theoretically expand the urban service boundary, right? There's no way to balance it out between jurisdictions. I know I'm just, I'm a dreamer. What can I say?
Unfortunately.
They're all handled separately. So if you take that instance where Morgan Hill has four years and they're entitled to five theoretically, and your primary goal is to, one of the primary goals is to protect agricultural land, but they want to, they say, well, this is the perfect spot. Here's some agricultural land. What would you do in that instance? Could you say, well, build denser? You know, we really need to protect the serpent, this agricultural land? Or are your hands tied to some respect? I mean, how do you handle a terrible situation where they're proposing to go out into agricultural land and we don't want to give up any of our prime ag land?
You know, Lafco has, by state law, we have over 16 factors to consider. And not all factors may be relevant in one case, not all factors may be as important. When it comes to ag land and if a proposal has impacts on ag land, one of the first things we'll look to see is how can we move away from impacting those ag lands? And we have, in the past, said about, look to more efficient development patterns. Look to incentivize infill development, more compact growth. We have made those recommendations in the past. So yeah, again, this is something that the commission has to weigh. It's, there's no formula really.
Yeah. There are a lot of strip malls and large parking lots that could be redeveloped instead of the ag land.
Exactly. So we have said that, we've made recommendations like that in the past.
Okay, great. Let me ask you, is the, can the public member, is there any restrictions on the public member? Are they not allowed to be from the city of San Jose?
That's right. So in state law, there is a very specific provision that applies to Santa Clara Lafco only, even though there are other Lafcos that have very unique composition. So in San, for Santa Clara Lafco, the public member cannot be from any of the cities already represented on the commission. And because San Jose has a permanent seat on the commission, over 50% of the Santa Clara County's population is sort of disenfranchised from being able to serve as a public member for that reason alone. And any other, so for example, right now, we have the city members from the city of Sunnyvale, and of course, we have a San Jose member. So pretty much the two largest cities in our county, public members are excluded from being from those two cities.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. A question about your expansion of urban service, or expansion of services outside of an urban service area. At this point in time, we have an issue with builders' remedy projects that are popping up all over the place. And is it, have, are there any instances where, and I'm not sure if this is appropriate for this conversation for now, but is this an issue that we want to look towards the future that these can be taken advantage of? Because state law allows development outside of urban service areas if the services are available? Then this is maybe something for your meetings.
Yes, we just discussed that we may have to have conversations, more conversations about this. But again, our policies and state law really limits what Lafco can do in terms of allowing services outside city limits. There are very limited instances where Lafco can approve service extensions. Would be in anticipation of a future annexation. It would be to address imminent or impending threat to public health and safety. It's really not there to address new development. That's not how the law is written.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that it can be taken advantage of. Somebody else wants to talk here?
Sure, I'll just add a quick note. So Lisa McHale through the chair, you know, SB 330 is its own subset of the law, so it interacts with other laws. And, you know, I think that the county and other jurisdictions are navigating that right now. So there's not a clear answer or response, I think, that Lafco could provide or county staff at this time.
Yeah, I understood. I was just sort of want to bring it to the forefront, because I know that's a potential future issue. I was interested in your auditing that you've been doing. It's one of the parts of Lafco I didn't know about. I've known a lot of the other information, but I didn't know that you were doing those kind of audits. Are there any examples where you've seen redundant services or been able to find places where we've seen some significant savings as a result of the work you've done there?
Yeah, we've seen a number of instances and we've made a number of recommendations. One instance is the fire districts, for example. There is the Saratoga Fire District that is a small district that serves a portion of Saratoga, the city of Saratoga and some lands just outside the city of Saratoga. And this district is surrounded by the Central Fire District, which is a much larger district. Saratoga Fire District does not provide, does not have any firefighters. They contract completely with Central Fire Service to provide services. But they do have an elected board of directors. They have three board members who are elected and who serve as the board. They're an independent district. So there have been recommendations on why does, what is the purpose of having this elected board of directors and this independent district providing service? Would it be better consolidated with the larger district that surrounds it? So that has been something. We've done special studies, we've looked at cost-benefit analysis. There was a slight cost advantage to dissolving the district. There was a slight cost advantage to dissolving the district. And when it came before Lafco, really Lafco didn't necessarily move forward with the dissolution of the district or the consolidation of the district because there wasn't much, there was a lot of support from the community for the district. They felt like they were being better heard. Having a locally elected board sort of seemed like an advantage to them and Lafco sort of backed off from that. We've seen other examples. Another example is the El Camino Healthcare District, where this healthcare district, it used to be called the Hospital District, the El Camino Hospital District, and was created in the 1950s to, to run a hospital. But since then, the hospital has been transferred to a nonprofit foundation. And the healthcare district doesn't have anything to do with the, with the hospital itself. The property taxes that they collect are basically used, are redistributed to the community, to nonprofit groups in the community to. So that was another question that we raised. Does this need, there, is there a need for the district? And the district was also using district funds to purchase properties beyond the district boundaries, purchase a hospital beyond the district boundaries. So there was questions about, is that appropriate? So those are the kinds of issues that we've dealt with in that. There are some other districts where there are maybe overlapping services. For example, the Guadalupe Coyote Resource Conservation District, which I think now is called the North County Resource Conservation District. And the services they were providing seem to have some overlap with what the countywide valley water district provides. So we were raising questions about that and asking that the district sort of go back to, to providing services that it was originally created to provide, more to do with soil conservation and ranch lands.
Good, thank you. One more question. Are there any sewage districts that are, that are not under your preview? Sanitation districts?
No.
All the san, the water, there's water districts that are not under your preview, but not sanitation districts?
The private water companies, the mutual water companies are not under Lafco jurisdiction, but if they're a special district, they're under.
But there's, all, all the sanitation districts are under Lafco's preview?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Vice Chair Belska?
Hi, yes, thank you. Thank you for this presentation. This was very, very educational. So a couple of quick questions. So Lafco staff, is there really just four people doing all of this? Hey, well, good job. You guys must, must keep yourselves very busy. So I have a question about the city, the, what, what looks like the city boundaries that are outside of the city's urban service area. What, what happens there? Who?
That's a historic, historically, so for example, the City of San Jose, if you look at that boundary, the, towards the southeast and some of the other lands in the city are outside. So the city consciously made a decision that those are lands that they are not going to provide urban services to. And so they've put them outside their urban service area. And the same thing with, say, Mill Peters. They had a measure where they decided that they're not going to do any hillside development and they actually retracted their urban service area boundary, even though there are some lands in the city.
So who provides services to those areas then?
No urban services are provided in that. They basically don't do development in those areas.
So the county is not obligated to provide services to those areas either then?
No, they are within the city limits of the city. So it's within the city jurisdiction for services and for development, but they've decided those are not areas that they want to see growth happen.
Okay. Would the county ever consider annexing those areas back into unincorporated county?
So the process would really be for the city to decide whether they want to detach those lands. There's, there's not really a process for the county to annex, but there's a process for the city to detach those lands. And they'd have to come to Lafco. And we really haven't seen any interest from the cities. They really are quite happy leaving them within their jurisdiction, but sort of identified as lands that they're not going to grow into.
But they could potentially, they wouldn't need anyone's permission to then develop those lands. They, they could develop those.
That's right. I, I believe for San Jose, it's outside there. Those lands are outside their green line, which is a water-approved growth boundary that was adopted in 96 that limits development beyond that. That probably is outside those, but yeah, you're right, that they wouldn't need to come to Lafco or anybody else to decide if they want to grow there or not.
Okay. And, and the county has no, and like you said, the county has no way to, let's say reclaim those lands for either public lands or just unincorporated lands? Huh, interesting.
And I would just add that we do have some cities that have not just the green line, but they have policies within their general plan saying, even though those lands are in the city, they're outside the urban service area and therefore, you know, it's limited what can be done with them. I think Morgan Hill is one of those cities. So, so then my, my other question or maybe observation is that it seems like a lot of projects that come to the planning department, which are located within, I guess located in unincorporated lands within the urban service areas, those projects that have to be offered up to the city for annexation. And it seems like the cities, from, from what I've seen, usually decline that. Is, is there a reason?
Through the chair, I think it depends on the city. We'd have to defer to the city for the reasoning. Sometimes they'll, they'll note that they don't feel that they have capacity for water. That, that would be an example in the groundwater, but they don't typically tell us.
Yeah, you know, generally speaking, from a property tax standpoint, residential land is a loser. It just, it takes more money to serve them than they bring in. So it's just not worth it to them.
So, so just so I understand, if it's in the city's urban service area, doesn't the city have to service that property?
So, so when a city is planning, so through their general plan, they'll plan for the area that's within their, their urban service areas and they plan by density. So anything that exceeds that density becomes a reason that they can state that they're not going to supply. So that's, that's some of the reasons that we've heard recently in the course of our housing element update, when we were looking in our rural areas. In our conversations, it had a lot to do with the level of density that, that was being proposed and then the differences with their general plan and what they planned for from a capacity level. It sounds, looks like county council wants to add.
Yeah, I was just going to add that, you know, one of the major reasons we got in prior RENA, in prior housing element cycles, the state Housing Community Development Department recognized our, our unique land use policies and that, you know, the county, unlike many, many other counties that have a lot of development and there are urban services in those areas. They basically have mini towns that aren't incorporated. We, we don't have that. And so they recognized that, that, and gave us a very low RENA. But this, this year now, or this cycle now, we've been hit with a much higher RENA because they did take into account the, the portions of unincorporated area inside city, urban service area. So it puts the county in a really awkward position that we don't provide urban services, but we are being expected to achieve arena that includes those areas. So it's a real, you know, and, and if, if somebody wants to develop, you know, multifamily housing in, within a city urban service area or, you know, pocket, then pretty much they have to annex, or most of the time, they have to annex to get urban services. And then the issue becomes, well, who gets RENA credit for that? You know, we would have to, you know, we would have to negotiate with the city to get any of that RENA credit. So it's a real pickle that it's put us in.
No, thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, I, I, I'm a little shocked to hear that cities aren't required to provide urban services inside their urban service areas. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Okay. And any speakers on this item?
We have one speaker in the Zoom room, Paul Soto. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking. You'll have two minutes.
Paul Soto from the horseshoe. Thank you for that presentation. In the seven years that I've been doing advocacy, I've never heard of this organization. I'd like to inform you that you and I are going to be very, very familiar with each other. We're going to get to know each other on a first-name basis. I can guarantee you that. One of the things that I find conspicuously absent is redlining. Now, in, when you presented, in, in your first slide, when you presented the presentation, you started from a start point in 1950, which was incorrect. It was absolutely incorrect as a starting point. However, it was corrected in Slide 45. In Slide 45, you started at 1940, which is the correct starting point. And the reason why I state that is because we all know that the redlining map of 1939, that's the start point. So all of these lines and all these cities and everything, all of these are racially divided along racially discriminative, discriminatory lines. Why? There was no democratic process in the creation of these lines. Why? Because there was no Mexicans allowed on the city councils at all, nor the county board of supervisors. So that calls into question the legitimacy of every single one of these lines. And that was conspicuously absent. So I'm going to be in contact with you very directly regarding that particular issue and how we are, as a city and a county, are going to correct that. And it's going to be corrected. It's just how are we going to get there? But I guarantee you, it will be corrected. Because I've been the generational victim of not having that conversation and centering that within the context of these conversations. That's number one. Number two, I'm also a historical preservationist and I'm really interested in hearing your policies on instituting racial equity within the context of these land use issues, specifically historical districts. Now I'm interested in getting South Seipuentes historical district landmark designation and have that sanctioned by both the city and the county. So.
And that concludes our speakers on the item.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much again for the presentation.
Through the chair, if I might just give a special thank you again to Naylema and Dania for coming down this evening and being here with us. Thank you so much.
Okay, item number seven. I have no report from the chairperson, any report from the commissioners? No report from the commissioners. Any report from county council?
No report.
Report from the Planning Commission Secretary and the Deputy Director?
Thank you. I think I still have to do it twice. But as the, as the Planning Commission Secretary, we do not currently have any items for the March Planning Commission meeting. So there's an expectation that we'll probably cancel that meeting, but we'll know more in the next week or two. And we'll let the planning commissioners know. So you might have a month off.
Great. Any report from the director?
No report.
Thank you. And there's no speakers on this item?
We have no speakers on these items.
Okay, going on to.
Ask a quick question. Do we only have a report from San Martin when they have a meeting?
Yes.
Is that a policy now?
When they have, when there are items on the agenda in their area.
Got it, thanks.
Okay, item number 13, announcements and correspondence. Just a reminder, annual Form 700 is due April 1st, so make sure and get that done. There are no vacancies on the commission. And we receive correspondence, ID number 119232. And that is it. Last item is to adjourn. The next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 28th at 6:00 PM, right here. Thank you, everybody.